Welcome to the February 23rd, 2021 regular meeting of the Montgomery ISD School Board. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Dr. Morrison, I bet we have a few special recognitions.
We have several special recognitions tonight, and I could not be more excited. I'm going to ask Dr. Amy Busby to come forward. Recently, our school district celebrated National Counselors Week, but we didn't feel a week was long enough because our counselors in this district are truly special. I am in front of you this evening, being honored to serve as your superintendent because a counselor saw more in me than I saw myself and suggested that I ought to think about college, and I did become the first in my family to go to college. That wouldn't have happened without counselors, and I know the same sort of care and affection that I got as a student. Our counselors at Montgomery ISD bring it every single day. We are so blessed and honored to have several of them in our audience tonight, and I'm going to ask Dr. Busby to start our recognition of these amazing educators.
And first, I'd just like to say welcome to all of our counselors that are in the building right now. I appreciate you all coming. And those who were not able to attend tonight have already reached out, of course, with their counsel apart and said they need some of the appreciation and recognition for tonight. But of course, with our interesting week last week and our rescheduling and different things like that, there were a few that were not able to attend tonight. As Dr. Morrison mentioned, during each month of February, school counselors are recognized during National School Counselor Week for their unique contributions and impact that they have on helping students achieve success in school and even for planning for their futures. Montgomery ISD would like to take this opportunity during our board meeting to extend that recognition and show our appreciation for everything our school counselors do. Our need for outstanding school counselors in our schools has been magnified this year, for sure, as our students have faced hurricanes, school closures for ice and snow and weather, and of course, COVID this year. And these are in addition to the various challenges students face on a normal year. We'd like to give a special thank you to our dedicated school counselors for the support they provide our students, not only academically, but also socially and emotionally. So at this time, we would like to share a video highlighting some of the great work of our counselors.
They do help out with their schedules ahead of time before the next school year starts.
I would say the role of a school counselor evolves even from year to year based on the needs of our students, but yes, we do so much more than just academic support, but everything that we do involves that whole student and how to make that student be the best student they can be.
You know, our biggest role is to assist students. Under that comes a big role of understanding the hows and the whys to all their behaviors.
The counselor is truly the heart of the school. Whether somebody is celebrating or having difficulty, the counselor is there to scoop them up.
To make people feel better and not feel left out.
Our counselors do so much for the social-emotional part of our students' learning. And of course, this year, we have faced that more than ever.
You might be doing something and then you're pulled for a crisis situation or for a student that needs you. So that's what I mean by anything can change daily. So you have to be prepared to wear many hats.
Understanding, though, that our students do have deep needs that we have to meet. And so, you know, that obviously is our priority, and so when a kid comes in with that, whatever we were doing that day goes away, and the student right there in that need is what we need.
I definitely, even with teaching, this is my 21st year, so I have kids who have gone all the way, and it's neat to see them grow up and to see them be successful.
Yes, I have many students that keep up with me and let me know how they're doing, and they will send me screenshots of their college transcript each semester to say, hey, Ms. Hawk, I made all A's this semester.
Ms. Hawk, I strongly appreciate your help through last year in helping me fix my schedules, and that way I can focus on my work and on students. And I really enjoyed Kurt Spencer's class, so thank you very much.
She talks to me when I'm a little frustrated or sad. She talks to me when I'm feeling weak.
This is the best counselor ever.
Yeah, I'm fortunate in my role that I get to work directly with the counselors at Montgomery ISD, and we truly are, we truly have just an amazing group of counselors that they're just uplifting, they're responsive, they're positive. And, you know, I try to support them, but really, you call them and they make me feel better. So they're just a great group to have around. We do have, like you said, some of them with us in our audience, so we are going to recognize them. Dr. Fuller, if you don't mind joining us, and Ms. Moreno. And we are going to present a certificate to each of our counselors in honor of her service. So counselors, when we call your name, if you don't mind coming to the front, and we will recognize you, and then you can remain standing up here, and we'll take a group picture. All right, from Keenan Elementary, Ms. Kim Wonderlick. From Lone Star Elementary, Ms. Grace Smith. She's not able to be with us tonight. We want to recognize her as well. From Montgomery Elementary, Ms. Kelly Lowe. From Lincoln Elementary, Ms. Deanna Peterson. From Madley Ranch Elementary, Ms. Renee Sorrell. Stuart Creek Elementary, Elaine Clevenger. From Montgomery Junior High, our two lovely ladies there, Ms. Barbara Gagliano and Tressie Stewart. And from Oak Hills Junior High, we have Kristy Morris and Kristy Chefchik. From Montgomery High School, we have Connie Mathis, Melanie Tolles, and Lorraine Thompson. And from Lake Creek High School, we have Ms. Jo Hawk, Ms. Deidra Bartholomew, and Ryan Reese. And from our Special Ed Department, we have two wonderful counselors in that area as well, Ms. Carrie Gilchrist and Nicole Morgan.
And we'd have the board join them for a picture.
Everybody stand together. Yeah, the board, if y'all, if y'all could stand on the stage behind them.
Yeah, y'all stand behind, I think she knew her killing.
Y'all ready? One, all right, one, two, three, one, two, three, last one, okay, there.
And Dr. Fuller and board, just again to emphasize how important our counselors are, we actually formed a subcommittee of our strategic plan because everywhere we were looking at our strategic plan, there was an importance of counselors, and so we felt the need to form a group that would focus on our counselors to make sure that we are supporting them in their important work. Dr. Busby and I visited them on our Professional Development Day recently, and I was trying to say, hey, don't be bashful about asking us for what we need to do to support you better. Trust me, they were not bashful at all, so. But I am internally grateful for the great work that they do on behalf of our students. They are champions in our school, and we are so fortunate to have the caliber of counselors that we have in Montgomery ISD. So to all of you, thank you sincerely. Mr. Fuller, we also want to recognize some other very special folks. As we know, last week was a very unusual week. Now, you all will tell me this was not the typical Texas weather in the winter. Since I am new to Texas, this is the only Texas I know, and I do remember saying one of the great perks about being the Superintendent of Montgomery ISD was I would not ever have to call a snow day. I was very wrong. But I think that last week, as I often say, I don't learn a lot about leaders when things are good. I learn a lot about leaders when there are challenges, and we had multiple challenges last week. I want to thank my senior leadership team. Making the decision to close school is never easy. It should never be easy, but I think that we strove to make that decision as quickly and as responsibly as possible. And so to my senior team, I thank them. Obviously, we had a board meeting and a board workshop. We had to stay within state guidelines for when those meetings have to get posted and reposted. Debbie and her husband trafficked very unsafe conditions to come up, and she didn't have electricity at her home. There was no electricity in this building, so she had to join us at the warming center at Madley Ranch, and nothing was going to stop Debbie from posting. Matter of fact, the only thing she kept on saying is, don't counsel, I don't care what you do with school, don't counsel the board meeting. I went ahead and had to cancel the board meeting, but thank you, Debbie, for getting us on the right side of the postings. Our principals were phenomenal. We were doing building checks every day, but when we got to Saturday, we simply didn't have the capacity to not only check all of our campuses, but every classroom. I sent a text out at about 11 o'clock. By 2:00, every school, every campus had been checked either by our principals or assistant principals. So so grateful to them. Our Director of Communications, Justin Moreno, did a phenomenal job of keeping our public informed, and even on Monday of this week, when we had clearly stated that we were open for business, one of our news agencies declared that we were closed, and Justin was on it just like that. So Justin, thank you, great job. We were able to establish a great partnership with the city of Montgomery, the mayor, city manager, Chief Solomon, because we needed to have our buildings accessible in case of the need for a warming sheltering in place. We used Madley Ranch for that purpose, and between the city and multiple employees were able to open up Madley Ranch. That was not easy because Sunday, at the height of when it was getting really, really cold, and the snow was coming down, the ice, our boiler was not where it needed to be, and our maintenance department was just phenomenal. And from getting the boiler fixed to allow us to have Madley Ranch open, to doing everything that they could to keep that warming center open for our community, to making sure that the damage to our buildings was minimized by the good work that they proactively did, to keeping our buildings, as soon as problems were identified, to getting them fixed. Joe and his team, Joe Kennard, were phenomenal. And I would like to ask Joe to come up, and I'd like to ask Chief Phillips to come up because there were times when the city couldn't staff the warming center, and Chief Phillips, between his good work and the work of our school police, that warming center never was without coverage to welcome families, to let them know that there was a caring, safe place for them to be during a true devastating event. And Chief Phillips, Joe, I'd like to have the two of you come forward just so we can recognize you on behalf of multiple people who stepped forward last week. Matt, would you like to say anything on behalf of the board?
Sure. Gentlemen, thank you. We began getting phone calls about what's going to happen with school, and because of the hard work that y'all put in, it was real easy. Folks had a lot of great communication. Mr. Moreno, you also helped with that, so thank y'all. It's one of the things I love about our town and that I love about our school districts, we come together in times of need. I also want to share thanks to Dr. Morrison for your leadership in this time and to all the community for chipping in and helping out wherever you can. But you guys stood out. I've heard a lot of great things from people, so thank you very much.
Joe, too, thank you.
All right, let's hope we don't have to do that next winter as well.
Yeah. As far as I can turn, that's winter in Texas.
Ms. Whitaker, are there any public comments? All right, hearing none. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Kirby moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining, thank you. All right, action items, moving right along to the action items.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. I'd like to ask Justin Moreno to come forward. We are asking the board to see fit, as part of your legislative platform and agenda, to allow us to advocate on behalf of our school employees. As we know, across the United States, different states have prioritized different groups to be prioritized for vaccination. And what has been troubling to me is we have states where teachers and school employees have yet to return for in-person instruction, who have been prioritized for vaccinations. In our great state of Texas, that has not happened yet. And so we are respectfully asking the board to help us adopt a resolution to ask that in the next round of designation of priority, that our school employees who have been diligently and I think heroically working since the beginning of September, welcoming back students, 94% of our students are currently being served in person with low rates of having to quarantine because of the diligence and the way that we've been following protocols and procedures, that we want the ability, and I want to be very clear about this, not to ask that employees be vaccinated, but for those employees who choose and desire to be vaccinated, that in the next round of designations, that school-based employees across the state of Texas get that designation for priority. Justin?
Yeah, good evening, trustees and Dr. Morrison. The board resolution before you requests that the governor and the state's expert vaccine allocation panel define school district employees as frontline workers for the purposes of the vaccine allocation and distribution. We believe this is entirely appropriate, given, as Dr. Morrison mentioned, the incredible work our campus-based and district staff have carried out this year to ensure that face-to-face instruction can occur. I mean, the hard work has shown in that 94% of our students are choosing in-person instruction. And we do want to reiterate that the resolution acknowledges an employee's right to exercise their own personal rights in determining whether to receive a vaccine once available, and with that, we recommend passage of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno, Dr. Morrison. Board members, are there any questions? All right, I have one then, Mr. Moreno, don't go too far. Are we aware of any other school districts, any other organizations that have passed similar resolutions or taken a similar stance?
Yes, there are a handful of school boards across the state who have passed similar resolutions. The Texas Urban Council of School Districts comprises some of the largest school districts in the state, sent a letter to the governor expressing a similar request.
Thank you. And just so the public knows, again, the third time someone up here has said it, this is not requiring a vaccine of anyone, it's just saying that we hope our people will be prioritized in the next round of vaccinations. It's a way that we can offer that option, as I understand it right, Mr. Moreno. Any other questions? All right, then, is there a motion?
I'll do it. I'll make a motion to consider the approval of a resolution requesting Governor Abbott to include public school district personnel in the official expert vaccine allotment panel's definition of frontline workers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Turner seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. That motion carries, thank you. Next up, looks like we have a waiver for the school closure. Dr. Morrison?
I'm going to actually turn it over directly to Dr. Busby.
All right.
So as you know, school calendars usually have additional days built into their calendar to deal with weather events like we had, or additional school minutes to be able to account for those missed days. But unusual events like last week are usually more than what districts account for. And so fortunately, TEA did put out the option for districts to apply for a waiver. That waiver gives us the opportunity to apply for the missed school days, for the dates that we were out, without having to use any additional makeup days. So this would apply for the four days, the 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th. So I do ask that you approve that we can apply to TEA for those missed school days.
Just a couple of comments on this. Again, the decision to close school should never be easy, and each and every day, we spend a lot of time trying to always get to how can we get our students back in the school? We had actually thought that on Tuesday of last week, anticipating that there would be some inclement weather, we could try to go remote, and our principals had communicated that to staff, we were all ready. I meet with communication councils for both the elementary and secondary, they were all on board with trying to go remote. Obviously, not only were we dealing with weather and extreme cold, but we were also dealing with power outages and the no power equals no remote. Those inverse weather conditions continued on through Wednesday and Thursday, and then Friday, we had hoped to potentially get back in the school. The biggest impediments on Friday were still having many, many families, including many of our employees, dealing with substantive damage to their homes, power outages, and we, our 10 campuses, were just not in condition to welcome back students. We were literally dealing with the same thing that many families were dealing with, pipes busting, boilers that needed to be attended, heating conditions were not right, and even on Friday, the thawing had not started, so many of our parking lots were pretty much sheets of ice in the morning. So we feel it was the responsible thing to close school, and so we would ask that you not only allow us to go ahead and put in this waiver to TEA, but one other thing that we commit is we will come back in March, we're going to work with our DAC committee. I understand this has been an unusual year between COVID and hurricane at the beginning of the year and multiple weather events, but I do think that in the creation of our calendar for next year, I'm not sure that we've accounted for enough makeup days, and so we may come back with some suggestions that we will vet through DAC and our community and potentially revisit that as well. But for tonight, we are asking that you give us the authority to request a TEA, the waiver of those days.
Thank you. Discussion, questions?
Well, we, at any point, I know in the past, when we'd missed a day or two, instead of rescheduling a full day, we'd add minutes to the schedule. Is that, this is a complete waiver, we won't have to add any educational minutes? Yeah. TEA gave us the ability to not have to make up any of the days that were missed last week, so.
Great, other questions? All right, hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the application for TEA's missed school day waiver.
All right, Mr. Hammonds, is there a second?
I'll second.
Important, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions? All right, that motion carries, thank you very much. Information items, Tasby HR review, operations review, Dr. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. As we go about creating a strategic plan, sometimes I think we talk about, once we have the plan, everything is going to magically get better. I think a plan is always helpful, although I will always refer to a friend I had in the military, battle plans don't survive first contact with the enemy, and so you're constantly having to change your plan as conditions and variables get introduced. But what drives any good plan is an organization's commitment to continuous improvement. And so what we will do as part of our responsibility as staff to this board and to this community is to constantly be updating this community on the progress of our school district, around the five goals that you have passed, the performance objectives and the KPIs that are part of the strategic plan. Not only will we constantly be sharing with you how we are doing, where we are achieving success, sometimes where we are actually exceeding expectations, and undoubtedly, there will be times when we are not exactly where we need to be and what we are going to do to correct that. But we will also constantly be doing audits of our important operations to make sure that's not just our viewpoint and our snapshot of how we're progressing, but that organizations that have the ability to come in with an outside lens and say, here are areas, Montgomery ISD, that you are doing exceptionally well, and here are areas of improvement and an opportunity to get better, to better serve our students and to better serve our community and our staff. The board last year requested such a review, starting off with HR, for multiple reasons, including COVID, that didn't happen. That was one of the first things that our staff committed to doing early this year. These are intensive reviews, they do not happen overnight, they take multiple meetings, they take multiple documentations, and they take a lot of staff time, but ultimately, the information is incredibly invaluable, and the information in itself is important, what we do with it is even more important. I could not think of a better partner to do this work than to have Tasby, your state organization, lead that workforce, and we were very fortunate to have somebody and get familiar with her, because you will be hearing from her again on Thursday at her workshop, because she not only did this HR review, but she also did a comprehensive staffing review that we will discuss on Thursday of this week. So with that, I'd like to have Karen Dooley of Tasby share with you this HR operational review. Karen?
Okay. Good evening, board members and Dr. Morrison, thanks for having me this evening. I am Karen Dooley from Tasby HR Services, and I have had the opportunity the last couple of months to work with the school district in conducting an HR review and a staffing review. The HR review, April Mayberry accompanied me with that in doing the review, but it's just me presenting tonight, so. Can y'all all, y'all can all see the screen and it's all good, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. So for data collection, we requested information of the HR department processes, procedures, and information, and conducted virtual interviews with HR and payroll staff, principals, supervisors, and other district leaders. I want to make sure that you realize that, you know, HR kind of lives in many different parts in the district, or there's interaction between HR and all the different departments. And sometimes their processes may be in HR, and sometimes it crosses over into other departments. So I want you to keep that in mind, that when I was looking at processes, or when we were looking at processes, that sometimes the process may be an HR process, but it may live in a different department, but we still review it, not just the ones that live in HR, if that makes sense. We looked at peer comparison data for HR departments in the district's enrollment range. This included analyzing the department functions and total number of staff, and the breakdown of professional and support staff in the departments compared to the district. Finally, successes and opportunities that reflect HR best practices that result in efficiencies and effectiveness in an HR department was determined. Most school boards and superintendents expect HR to be leaders in improving the quality of talent acquisition, development, retention, and management of the district's human capital. Strategic HR departments have measured Strategic HR departments have measurable goals and objectives that align with the district's strategic plan and systems that support principals and other supervisors and respond to employee needs. Other characteristics include effective integration and use of technology and software, streamline processes, and documentation of workflow and processes. Let's take a look at some of the key HR functions that were reviewed through this process. The areas we reviewed include department organization and management, the technology systems and use of those systems, workforce metrics, staffing, and position control, personnel records management, recruiting certification and employment processes, administrator support and customer service, grievances and investigations, compensation systems and administrations, leave administration and substitutes, performance appraisal and performance management, and finally, staff development. Successes and opportunities in each area were identified. The report includes specific dialogue about the opportunities and can serve as a roadmap for making improvements moving forward. In department organization and management, the success was the HR location. HR's location and offices are adequate and effective for customer service. In the same category, opportunities included: develop clearly stated goals and measurable objectives, redefine organizational structure by increased staffing level and reassigning responsibilities, review and update policies and procedures to reflect current practices, define and divide roles and responsibilities between HR and payroll to provide checks and balances against fraud and errors. Successes for technology systems: automated systems are beginning to be used to streamline HR processes and reduce administrative and compliance costs. Opportunities are to continue to maximize automated systems to streamline HR processes and reduce administrative and compliance costs, and then train HR staff on use of systems and applications and provide ongoing technical support. Under workforce metrics, staffing, and position control, the district maintains a stable workforce. You all have a very, you're very low in your amount of turnover for teachers versus the state average, and that's where we get that number from. So you do have a stable workforce when it comes to looking at data on your teacher staff. For opportunities, you need to initiate a plan to accurately predict staffing needs and use HR metrics to help decision makers identify trends and manage the workforce Personnel records management: personnel records are complete and accessible, and systems ensure confidentiality and appropriate lease of records. Opportunities in this area are implement systems to ensure record retention schedule is current and to facilitate the purging, archiving, and retention of records; implement systems to provide for security and protection from loss, and adopt a disaster recovery Under recruiting, certification, and employment practices, successes are hiring authority is appropriately delegated to meet staffing needs. And that means that your policies are in place, that you give that hiring authority to the superintendent during the summertime in order to expedite that hiring process, when a lot of times, it'll get bogged down whenever you're waiting for board approval because of the number of meetings that it would require to keep the hiring process moving throughout the summer. And y'all do have a policy with that in place. So hiring authority is appropriately delegated to keep, to meet staffing needs and to meet the hiring requirements. Elementary principals work with curriculum and instruction to offer an opportunity to screen applicants in the spring. Principals work with curriculum and instruction on a timely and efficient transfer process of employees in district. The application process is user-friendly and efficient, and appropriate oversight for contract management is provided. Opportunities in this area: develop a system to verify and track certification status of staff not appropriately certified for their assignment; implement systems to increase quality and timeliness of the hiring process; develop a proactive recruiting plan and implement timely hiring processes; develop a process to update job descriptions; ensure online job postings are easily accessible and include a valid candidate screener; implement a fair, unbiased, and job-related screening process and ensure consistent application of that process; conduct uniform processes for criminal history and background checks; and implement an efficient and effective system for orientation and onboarding of new staff. Administrative support and customer service, successes are, the success is, HR supports staff in a kind and caring manner. And then opportunities: use various methods to disseminate information and process transactions; expand self-service capabilities for supervisors; and train and support principals and supervisors on HR-related issues. Grievances and investigations, a success is unemployment claims are addressed in a timely manner by the benefits manager and the business and finance department. Opportunities are: monitor or evaluate employee complaints to identify potential areas of concern; provide for prompt investigation and resolution of allegations of improper behavior by district employees; and transfer oversight of unemployment claims to the HR department from the benefits manager. Under compensation, success is the district complies with the federal wage and hour requirements, and the benefits manager has systems and procedures in place to comply with the Affordable Care Act. Opportunities in this area: embed HR in the design and implementation of the compensation plan; create pay practice procedures for all personnel; monitor and adjust employee pay systems on a periodic basis to remain competitive; ensure employee pay is competitive; and provide high-quality employee communication on pay and benefits. Under leave administration and substitutes, the successes are clearly defined procedures for communicating absence information exists, and the benefits manager has procedures in place for campus and department reporting of employees' need for extended leave. Under opportunities: implement process for monitoring leave balances and use analyzing absence trends data and counseling principals and managers with employees with above-average absence rates; ensure summary of leave benefits and employee communications are complete and aligned with policy provisions; implement strategies to recruit and retain a sufficient number of qualified substitutes; and provide training and support for long-term substitutes. Under the performance appraisals and performance management piece, a success is the district uses T-tests to evaluate all teaching staff. Opportunities are to ensure all employee evaluation tools are up to date and board-adopted evaluation systems are being used. Provide principals and supervisors support and consultation for managing employee performance and making and acting on decisions to terminate employees; and implement an inclusive, multi-faceted employee recognition program. Under staff development, a success is staff development opportunities are available through the curriculum and instruction department to employees throughout the district. Under opportunities for staff development: collaborate with the curriculum and instruction department on an employee professional growth plan, I mean, growth system; implement a comprehensive new teacher support program; provide career pathways for teachers, principals, and other staff; and evaluate staff development programs for their effectiveness. And that concludes the report. Basically, in a nutshell, of course, you've got access to it, and like I said at the beginning, there is text that accompany these recommendations that give more specifics. And it's intended as a roadmap, like I said from the beginning as well, that a implementation of it is not something that can happen overnight. Obviously, it is a three- to five-year process, but the good thing is, is that I know you are in the strategic planning process, and as y'all finalize the district's strategic plan, then this information can then be aligned with that, and that timeline can be created for how you can go about making those improvements to increase your effectiveness and your efficiency in your HR department.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
And I'll be glad to take questions. They may have to repeat the questions to me. When we tested earlier today, it's kind of difficult for me to hear what you're saying from the DIAS, so they may have to repeat them to me, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions?
Well, I just noticed that I counted through here, and we have like 20 difficult tasks ahead and 19 rather easy tasks. Is there some way you would prioritize these? Can she hear me?
Something, I heard something about prioritizing the different opportunities that are there, is that what was said?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yes, and actually, I have provided to Dr. Morrison a plan, I mean, the different categories listed that they can use in order to go through and prioritize. Also, in the report, if you saw the little arrows that were in there, it talked about what were easy to implement, what were hard to implement, and then what you had resources for or what would cost you. And so those are put in there for a purpose to be able to help guide, okay, what's the biggest return on investment that you can spend time doing, that you already have the resources, that can make a huge difference? And that would be the way that I would organize them if it was me that was implementing that plan.
The easy ones, okay.
I think what's really good about the plan that Karen shared with us is, again, it not only tells us what are quote-unquote "the easy things," but it also gives you what's the yield of doing those things. So for those things that are easy to implement and get to really positive results scale, those are the things we have to get after right away. For the things that are low-yield but easy to implement, again, there's no reason not to be focused and expeditious about doing those. The ones that will be a little bit harder are ones that are going to require resource allocation or a thoughtful process where we need collaboration from principals or from teacher groups, so that it's not just putting a top-down system in, but a system that people really believe is the best way to move forward. But again, those arrows really tell us what are the things that we should be focused on right away, because they're easy to do and they will be a high yield.
Board members, other questions? Ms. Dooley, we have been looking for a lot of data for some time on HR, and I just want to say, board members received a binder, and it's a lot of reading, but it's a lot of good data, and I want to say thank you for that. You've given us something to read over the snow days the past few weeks, so thank you for that. And if there are no other questions, then I will move us on to the next agenda item, which is our monthly report on financials from Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley.
Thank you all, I will see you on a couple of days. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thanks. Mr. Lynn?
This month's financial reports in your packet.
I don't have any additional information to present.
Okay. Are there any questions, board members? All right, the board has already completed its work that, from the prior closed session, with no other agenda items tonight, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.